Good evening, everyone. I'm happy for coming tonight. We're looking to call the Interboro School District Board of School District Reorganization December 4th, 2023. Your order. Mr. Phillips?
Mr. Phillips. Ms. Wilken?
Here.
Mr. Willis?
Here.
Mr. Harris?
Here.
Mr. Goldsberg?
Here.
Ms. Joseph?
Here.
Ms. Fagan? Mr. Evans?
Here.
Mr. Chabon?
Here.
Mr. Phillips?
Here. We have the location and the place.
Heavenly Father, please hear our prayer. Blessed are all schools, colleges, and especially the Interboro School District. And granted this board and their deliberations of seating, the spirit of wisdom, truth, and knowledge, what is undertaken always be done in charity and in peace, and what we do might be for the benefit of others. All this, we ask in your name. Amen.
Blessed are you, Jesus, who defies the law of the United States of America, and through your very power, which sustains, why, in your name, on earth, in the visible, the liberty of us for all.
Do we have any further questions? Or I'm sorry, number three, the New School Reorganization?
Yes, sir. Interboro School District Public Meeting and Board of School Directors. There will be a reorganization meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors on Monday, December 4th, 2023 at 7:00 PM in the boardroom in the Administration Building, 900 Washington Avenue, Prospect Park, PA 19076. Signed, Jack Evans, Board Secretary.
Do we have any other comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Moving on to number five. We are going to have the election of the temporary president. I have called for nominations.
Nominate Jack Evans.
For nominations, hearing none, motion closed, nominations. Evans will now vote for Mr. Evans as temporary president. Everyone in favor would say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Is there takeover there, Mr. Evans? Would you like to sit over there?
No, sir. No, that chair's waiting.
I could move.
That chair's not ready for that chair yet.
Okay.
Okay, so next, number six, we have the oath of office and seating of newly elected and re-elected members, elected in November 2023, to be sworn in by his honor, Judge Lewis.
Mr. Goldsberg?
I do not. You do not? Oh. He's a monster. I need a, I need a sitter.
You would want hope, but not mine.
I claim Goldsberg.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
For the Interboro School District.
For the Interboro School District.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Well done.
Good job, and happy.
Justin. And you had two assistants. All right, girls, come on. It's time to go to work. You have to. Where you're at.
Hold the pot.
Hold the pot.
Ready?
Aye, Justin Chabon.
Aye, Justin Chabon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
With the Interboro School District.
With the Interboro School District.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Yay. I'll say this for last. Jamie? Who is here on your behalf?
Hi, Dr. Harris.
Come on over.
You're busy tonight.
My pleasure.
I, Jamie Wilken.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
I'll say this for last. Jamie? Who is here on your behalf?
Hi, Dr. Harris.
Come on over.
You're busy tonight.
My pleasure.
I, Jamie Wilken.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Mr. Phillips?
I want you to sit down.
What's your name? Jack Evans?
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Willis.
I did.
No, I'll stand for it.
This guy moans and groans every day when he moves.
Yeah, we'll limp over.
My God, you guys are like a bucket of mulch.
Hey, it's not easy being a school board.
Shirts on. Please. Don't insult me. I, Charles Willis.
I, Charles Willis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
With the Interboro School District.
With the Interboro School District.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God. Thank you. Well, well, Willis.
Well, we're down to the list.
Bring up the rear.
If you don't know, Mr. Harris is one of my favorites. And I am very disappointed in the calm collection of his clothing.
I told you.
I was going to wear sunglasses.
I had something all tagged out to just be Jack.
Take it easy, guys.
I will. I, Edward Harris.
I, Edward Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
For the Interboro School District.
For the Interboro School District.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Well, we're down to the list. Bring up the rear.
If you don't know, Mr. Harris is one of my favorites. And I am very disappointed in the calm collection of his clothing.
I told you.
I was going to wear sunglasses.
I had something all tagged out to just be Jack.
Thank you.
Take it easy, guys.
I will. I, Edward Harris.
I, Edward Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And the Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
For the Interboro School District.
For the Interboro School District.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Well, well, Willis.
Well, we're down to the list.
Bring up the rear.
If you don't know, Mr. Harris is one of my favorites. And I am very disappointed in the calm collection of his clothing.
I told you.
I was going to wear sunglasses.
I had something all tagged out to just be Jack.
Thank you.
Take it easy, guys.
I will. I, Edward Harris.
I, Edward Harris.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
I want you to sit down.
What's your name? Jack Evans?
Oh, I thought you said Mr. Willis.
I did.
No, I'll stand for it.
This guy moans and groans every day when he moves.
Yeah, we'll limp over.
My God, you guys are like a bucket of mulch.
Hey, it's not easy being a school board.
Shirts on. Please. Don't insult me. I, Charles Willis.
I, Charles Willis.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To serve, protect, and defend.
To serve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
The Constitution of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
Fulfill the duties and responsibilities.
As a school board director.
As a school board director.
For the Interboro School District.
For the Interboro School District.
With fidelity.
With fidelity.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you. Mr. President, just a big notation that Ms. Fagan, you'd come in, so she is present.
Yes.
So next, we have recognition.
That would be me.
That would be you.
All right. Good evening, everybody. As part of this meeting tonight, we are here to recognize, as bittersweet as it is, the retirement of Judge Lippert. As many of you know, Judge Lippert has been a staple here in Interboro School District, doing all of the swearing in that he does over the course of the many years. And that is a very important role. But he plays a much bigger role here involving our students when it comes to truancy. For the last 20, 24 years, Judge Lippert has really had an impact, a great impact, on his monthly rotations here at the school district to help improve student truancy and student attendance here in school. It's given him a great insight into what we as administrators work and do on a regular basis to ensure that kids are coming to school. And I have to tell you, he has had an incredible, incredible impact in a positive way on our students and our families. And he has embraced this belief and truly cares about the students and the families here in Interboro. And I wanted to ask Ms. Lambert to come up and say a few words about him because she is the pleasure of joining Judge every month when he holds truancy court here in the boardroom. So I'm going to ask her to say a couple of words for him.
In fact, I was preparing tonight for our Thursday time together, but I will say that once a month, I truly look forward to our time. We spend truly an entire day together. And it's not just case after case. I'd like to refer to it as family after family after family who needs you. And there's a barrier to get to school, and the barrier is your job to help what that barrier is. And it has gone far from a truancy citation to, you know, loss of license. It is far from that at this point. You have brought in the help of child guidance because you were on the board for truancy prevention, and so you have brought that in. You have brought our stakeholders of CYS in to help assist with cases that need the additional support. You have brought in the chief of the fire department to help a student become a junior society of fire department. You have brought the police in to bond that relationship between a student and a police officer who might not be seeing eye to eye, but have bonded that together. You have included teachers who you know have been protective factors for our students to ensure that they are successful. And so I will say, you have truly changed lives every single month to ensure the kids are coming to school. So I truly thank you, Judge.
We're going to miss you.
Give me a bag, all right?
We are going to miss you because you have really become a part of the Interboro family. And we're excited to have Judge Hopper, Mary Hopper, joining us.
By replacement.
And we welcome you.
No replacement.
We welcome you.
Can't replace them.
And this is really a small token of our great appreciation for all you have done, and we are going to miss you.
Truly.
We'll take it out after. Rachel, come on up for a picture with Judge.
Let's get the picture. Just got a ticket. I'm happy. So you can't see it, but it says, "I bucks," and then all the children around here. You've made a difference with my name from the school.
That's very much.
So I had planned on saying a few things as part of my exit, not anticipating this whatsoever. In 24 years, my most favorite thing I do every day is truancy. I don't need bank robbers. I don't need drunk drivers. I don't need landlord tenant problems. I need students. My commitment has been, and still to my last day, will be that at Interboro, you get a diploma, one of three lays. You graduate, you drop out and get a GED, or you go to jail, and we have a GED program there. But nobody goes without a diploma. I can't imagine to go through life without an education, which I've had the great benefit of having several college degrees and a family that supports me in that. To you, I have to say, it started with four men. Mike Plattus, Mike Barber, Charlie Fisher, Matt Benadetta. Those four men sat down with me and shared with me what it's like and what they needed, and my job was to figure out, how does the court, how does me, class of '76, help? And from that, over the years, with only a small exception, our members in this school district, educators, janitors, crossing guards, food service people, everyone is a part of what we do. And I am so happy about my successor, who I am so extremely fond of and have known since I was campaigning 25 years ago. And that's how I met her on the street. She was leaving your house by the way. Where was I going? You were going to a concert for Bruce Springsteen. But no, candidly, I thank you. I thank you. I thank the students. I thank the families. The team that you have now, Rachel, the boys at the high school, and the men and women at each and every elementary school. Our strongest thing at Interboro is the elementary schools, and the high school is really, really stepping up and taking an active role in this as well. I will miss flipping hamburgers and hot dogs every year for the truancy students that have turned themselves around because the success barbecue has been a major, it's an inducement to get kids to go to school. And if I could do truancy, and I've said this since I got here, if I could do it seven days a week, I would. Because that's how fulfilling it is to me and how much the students and their families mean to me. So I've said my piece. I say thank you from the bottom of my heart, from my family to yours, and I wish you all a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I'm allowed to do it. Any. All right. Next, we have number eight, election of president to serve from December 4th, 2023, until a reorganization meeting is held during the first week of December 2024, as per Section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code. This time, a call for nominations for president.
I'd like to nominate Justin Chabon.
Are there any other nominations? That being the case, all those in favor of Justin Chabon for president, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I'm a little happy. I'm a little happy, sorry.
He got the popular vote, too.
Every day.
Well, then, Mr. Chabon, congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chabon. Thank you. Let's keep on moving on the agenda. Election of Vice President to serve from December 4th, 2023, and so the reorganization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024, per Section 404 of the Pennsylvania School Code. At this time, I would like to call for nominations for the school board vice president. Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor of Mr. Evans as the school board vice president, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero.
Mr. Chabon, at this point, with that being the case, I would like to resign my position as secretary of the school board.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call to amend the agenda to add a motion to elect the secretary. One second. Okay, at this time, I would like to call for nominations for secretary. Oh, I'm sorry. All those in favor, here, all those in favor of amending the agenda, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Okay, at this time, I would like to call for nominations for secretary.
Nominate Glenn Goldsberg.
Are there any other? Hearing none. All those in favor of Glenn Goldsberg as the secretary, please say aye. Mission carries nine zero. Okay, thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Goldsberg.
Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Phillips.
Okay, number 10 on the agenda is the naming of the solicitor pending Section 406 of the Pennsylvania School Code. 10.1 is motion to appoint the law firm of Rafael Amupio as solicitor for Interboro School District at an annual retainer of $2,000 and an hourly rate of $210. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the reorganization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Just for the board and the public, that is a $5 increase from the previous year on the $210. Okay, hearing no other comments, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Next motion is to appoint the Serini Law Group LLC as solicitor for special education matters for the Interboro School District at an hourly rate of $205 and $100 for legal assistance time. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Next motion is to appoint the law firm of McNichol, Byrne, and Madalowski as solicitor for labor issues at an hourly rate of $235. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Next motion is to accept the limited scope engagement letter from the law firm of Diorio and Serini LLP as special counsel for the Interboro School District at an hourly rate of $205 and $100 for legal assistance time for residency matters. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Next motion is to appoint the Serini Law Group LLC as solicitor for special education matters for the Interboro School District at an hourly rate of $205 and $100 for legal assistance time. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Motion carries nine zero. Next motion is to appoint the law firm of McNichol, Byrne, and Madalowski as solicitor for labor issues at an hourly rate of $235. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Nine zero. Next motion is a motion to accept the limited scope engagement letter from the law firm of Diorio and Serini LLP as special counsel for the Interboro School District at an hourly rate of $205 and $100 for legal assistance time for residency matters. This appointment will be in effect from December 4th, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Next up is the naming of the depository. This is Section 621 of Pennsylvania School Code. The motion reads that the WSFS Bank be named depository for the Interboro School District funds for a period extending from December 1, 2023, until the organization meeting to be held during the first week of December 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Next is the approval of time and place of board meeting, which is Section 421 of the Pennsylvania School Code. Motion that the following schedule of board meetings begin at 7:00 PM, in which the meetings will be conducted in the boardroom of the Administration Building at 200 South McDade Boulevard, Glenaldton, Pennsylvania, 19036, or any facility as noted in the Interboro School District to be approved. Those dates are January 17, 2024, February 22, 2024, March 20, 2024, April 17, 2024, May 15, 2024, June 19, 2024, July 17, 2024, August 21, 2024, September 18, 2024, October 16, 2024, November 20, 2024, December 11, 2024. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Mission carries nine zero. Next motion is a motion that the Board of School Directors grants the solicitor's office leave to appeal any and all decisions of County Tax Assessment Appeal Board for the 2024 tax year to the Court of Common Pleas as it deems appropriate. Motion has been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments from board members? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. All right, next up, Ms. Riley.
Yes, I do not have any comments other than to congratulate the board members that are back and to our new officers. I look forward to a great 2024, and thank you.
Board members?
Yep, Mr. Phillips?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Ms. Riley, Interboro School Directors, and at this time, I'm pleased to accept this announcement of my official resignation from the Interboro Board of School Directors effective December 31, 2023. You're going to make me cry. It has been an honor and a pleasure to serve the families and staff of the district alongside the dedicated board of directors and an administrative team, and all of our Interboro employees. Everybody in this district is great, I want to tell you. They're outstanding. I'm proud of the accomplishments that we have done, and I know this school district will continue to thrive and provide equality and well-rounded education to our students under the current framework. Thank you all.
Thank you.
How many years?
Too many. Too many. 14 years.
Just wanted to thank Mr. Phillips for his leadership these, you know, the past 10 years that I've been on the board. We've been able to work together collegially for the betterment of the school district and moving the school district forward with significant capital improvements, high school project, admin project, all the other things that have been going on. He's kept us in a positive direction for the 10 years that I've been here, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
Any other questions or comments? I also want to thank Mr. Phillips. I told him that I was going to try not to cry, but the last eight years I've been on the board, there's not been any person that has been more of a role model to me, you know, more like a father figure in a lot of ways to me, and that, you know, I, the last eight years have been great, being able to pick up the phone, and your leadership style has totally made me into a better person, better father, the way you love your girls. So it's sad, but I know that, you know, you have put this district on the right path. And we can go down with the rabbit hole of hell, you know, financially and whatnot, but it would not be the way it is without you. And I think, you know, with you not being on this board is a major, major loss, but I look forward to continuing your leadership.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Phillips.
I'm going to show you my mom's for December public meeting, but that's okay. We got a reason to come back.
It's been a pleasure working with all of you.
Wait, which was me, the one with the ears?
Okay, you don't get ears. Any other, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chabon, is it lucky you're in your role?
Thank you. I appreciate the support. Like I said, it's hard to follow in Mr. Phillips's footsteps, but I think his leadership, there's going to be no change in terms of how the board functions with, you know, with Jack and I, and it's, he is the epitome of what a leadership, what a leader should be. So he lets, let the board, all of us flourish in our own ways, and I don't see any different difference in that. All right, hearing no other comments, please visit the Interboro School District website at www.interbordSD.org for further information on the meetings listed below. An audit committee meeting will be held virtually on Monday, December 11, 2023, at 5:30 PM. The next work session of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually on Monday, December 11, 2023, at 7:00 PM. The next public meeting of the Interboro Board of School Directors will be held virtually will be held in the Boardroom of the Administration Building on Wednesday, December 13, at 7:00 p.m. Meeting is adjourned.